It is 5:30 PM and I call to order the November 29th, 2022, Meeting of the Richland II Board of Trustees. May I please have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash?
I move the Board to convene an executive session to receive legal updates, discuss student appeals, breach of contracts, and employee recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. It's not, it's not working. Yes. And the motion passes. There are seven yes, zero noes. We will now convene in executive session. Uh, we need to, but, we need to redo the motion. We did not include employment recommendations and certified releases. You did? Oh, it was not included on the printed motion?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash?
I move the Board to convene an executive session to receive legal updates, discuss student appeals, breach of contracts, employee recommendations, and certified releases.
Employment recommendations and certified release, releases. Okay, thank you. And a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, is that correct up there? Okay. Okay, Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yeses, zero noes. The motion passes. We will now convene in executive session. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to an executive session at 6:37.
And a second?
Second.
Was that Dr. Scott?
Yes, it was.
We have, the motion was made by Ms. Washington to come out of executive session and was seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, please now vote. The vote is seven to zero. The motion passes. We will resume the public session. We will now move on to item 3.1, the inspirational moment. Tonight's inspirational moment is provided by the students of LW Conder Arts Integrated Magnet.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Davis. At LW Conder Elementary Art Mag, Arts Integrated Magnet School, students have the opportunity to explore meaningful and engaging experiences through art integration and Avid. The magnet theme of art integration is embedded in instruction throughout the school day by course subject teachers and in co-curricular activities and classes through interdisciplinary units. Students eagerly attend various art-related classes such as music, dance, strings, drums, visual arts, and physical education. Recently, our fifth grades, fifth grade students participated in a creative writing assignment where they highlighted their art and Avid experiences as a Conder star. Join me in welcoming in our inspirational moment, fifth grade student leaders Rajan Naismith and Ayana Dansler as they highlight a few of their experiences.
Hi there, Rajan. I have just been thinking about some awesome experiences at Conder. Now, I'm going to tell you a story, a story about my first day of school. Let me start with when I first came into the building. I was very nervous. I walked in all by myself, so that made me even more nervous. When I walked in, everyone was so great and the nervousness, nervousness was gone. I went to my teacher and she introduced me to my class. I met some new kids. By the end of the day, I had a best friend.
Oh, hi, Ayana. I've had great experiences too. I began attending Conder when I was in the first grade. Conder was, was my first public school experience and it was much bigger than my previous school. My first teacher was Mrs. Williams. She's an awesome first grade teacher. Our school is amazing because we are Arts Integrated Magnet School.
Rajan, I have another story to tell. It's a story about my experience in encore, specifically drums. I got into the steel drum band last year. This year, I am still in the steel band and have already done one performance at R2I2. So like I was saying, I have learned the parts of the drum, bass, tone, and slap. I have also learned a bunch of new songs like Fungala Fia, Oe Komava, and The Earth Is Our Mother.
Drum's class is very fun. Mr. Olala allows us to play on different types of drum like the metal drum, kanga, or djembe. I love learning about the drums of the past and how they were made. You know that I'm also part of the steel drum band and performing at different events is very exciting.
What about art class? Art is something that I love the most. I do it all the time. I have to say, our new art teacher is cool. Now, one fun thing we have done in art is to have a glow party with black lights, glowing materials, and music. We also learned about line and symmetry. Ms. Scherr said art is like math.
Visual arts class is also one of my best classes. Also thing we share is very cool and we get to use a glow for that we can color in. I love how we get to use neon colors when drawing, so I do love art class.
You're probably getting tired of me talking, but I only have a little bit more to talk about. And one thing is, another encore, music. You can show your feelings with music. The feelings you can show are happiness, sadness, confusion, being mad, or being excited. But we have music for different reasons and not just to show our feelings. You can also use instruments like a trumpet, didgeridoo, drum, beluga, violin, viola, and maracas. That's what I have learned so far about music.
Well, Conder's music class helped me learn tempo, rhythm, and pitch. One fun thing I like about music is when the music teacher, Ms. Smith, uses a laser beam for pitch. If the laser beam goes up, our voice is high and vice versa.
Through the years at Conder, I have always enjoyed dance class. Dance is just like music. You can show your feelings. There is music to dance like hip-hop, jazz, and opera. Now, I like to dance when I feel down and it calms me down. What do you think about dance?
I think all of the different types of dances we've learned are awesome. Dance also allows me to move and stretch my body. What do you think about strings? You know we are the only elementary school that has a cool strings teacher? Ms. Kelly even teaches our preschoolers to play.
We have a world-winning strings program. Our groups perform at community events and they bring home the highest honors from CPA and solo and ensemble competitions.
I love encore, but I also love being at an Avid school. Avid means advancement via individual determination. I believe this means that I should progress through my own determination. Avid minded doing helps with our organization skills. I even drew myself and ways that Avid can help me develop.
Not to brag, but I'm the Avid student of the month, so I'm kind of expert on Avid. I feel like I'm college and career ready.
Conder is a spectacular school. I love the way the arts are integrated into all of our subject areas.
Yes, learning through the arts has made learning exciting for me.
Me too, and the teachers are caring. Also, I have made many lifelong friends. I'll miss Conder when I go to middle school. I'm prepared and ready.
From my first nervous day walking into the building until today, I have had great experiences at Conder. Because of my experiences at Conder, I feel like I am also prepared and ready for middle school.
As we end, we would like to present our school song, which was written and composed by former fifth grade students.
Now, listen to our Conder stars.
To the, while the Conder Elementary sings to us, so we can all hear them. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter?
I move to approve the agenda for the November 22nd, 2022 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
Aye, second, thank you.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Thank you, Conder Elementary, for your inspirational moment. Now, please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 4.1, approval of the agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter?
I move to approve the agenda for the November 22nd, 2022 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
Aye, second, thank you.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote now. The vote is seven to zero. The motion passes. Item 5.0, consent agenda. We will now move on to item 5.0, the consent agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
I approve the consent agenda for, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the November 22nd, 2022 Regular School Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, please now cast your vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Point of information. Did the agenda state November 22nd instead of November 29th? I can't recall if that's what I read. Oh, the motion up there is incorrect. The date is wrong.
Madam Chair.
Christine Lewis? Okay.
Madam Chair, I think I need to restate that motion.
Okay, please do.
Because I read exactly from what I saw. Thank you. Thank you for that. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the November 29th, 2022 Regular School Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Now let's please vote. The vote is unanimous, seven to zero. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is item 6.0, public participation. Excuse me, 6.1. Before we begin, I will remind our speakers that each person is limited to three minutes and that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about the individual, school personnel, or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to staff for a response at a later time. And our first speaker this evening is Monique Daniels. Monique McDaniel's, excuse me. Okay, we will move on to Diva Taylor. Do we have Diva Taylor here with us this evening? Mr. Gus Philpott.
Thank you. I'm Gus Philpott, members of the Board, Superintendent. Welcome tonight to the new Board members. This room has such a different energy tonight. The State Inspector General's report identified many areas that should receive your careful examination and action. The report should not just be put on the shelf and allowed to gather dust. I urge you to appoint a committee, including citizen participation, to present recommendations to you for action, and I volunteer to serve on it. I also urge you to create a committee on safety and security, not a committee of the whole. Engage community partners and parents on this committee. On the agenda for tonight's meeting is item 8.1, approval for a proposed State School Boards Association, uh, set of resolutions. There are about thirty plus, thirty-two of them. The four of you new members may not be acquainted with the State School Boards Association, but they think they run Richland II. And so they present resolutions and adopt them for you to follow. I suggest that this Board and this district are fully capable of running this district. You have in front of you a list of resolutions that would probably take a workshop, eight hours in length, to understand and make decisions on. And before you authorize your nominee, your delegates who were selected at the last meeting to go to the State School Boards meeting and vote your wishes on these, the delegates need to know what it is that you want. I have no idea how you're going to get through thirty resolutions tonight. My suggestion would be just to shove it and you don't have to follow the suggestions from the State School Boards Association anyway, so why decide? A couple of the suggestions, for example, one of them would prohibit you, a Board member, from instituting a lawsuit against this school district. Now, if there's something seriously wrong and the Board won't fix it or the district won't fix it, who better knows what's going on and what needs to be fixed than a Board member? So I urge you not to adopt that resolution. Another one is health insurance for Board members. An unnecessary expense for the district. Y'all have health insurance. This is a part-time, temporary job, community service, and in this job, I think you don't need to ask the district to pay for health insurance, which would probably double the, more than double the district's outlay for your services. Another is to raise teacher salaries to the national level, whatever that is. And the state can't even afford the salaries, good salaries for the teachers today. How would, how would the state ever afford salaries if they were increased to the school level, uh, to the national level? So thank you and welcome to Richland II School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Our next speaker is Angela Vandelay.
Hello. Thank you for having us. Did you know that firearms are the first leading cause of death among children and teens in South Carolina? Did you know that in incidence of gun violence on school grounds in America, seventy-five percent of active shooters were current or former students? And seventy-three to eighty percent of shooters under the age of eighteen obtained the guns they used from their own home or the home of a relative or a friend? Did you know that Columbia has the third highest rate of guns being stolen out of cars in the United States? Did you know that South Carolina had the fifth highest rate of children killed by guns in the United States in 2020? Did you know that in a two-week span in 2021, there were five separate instances of kids bringing weapons to Midlands Public Schools, including one in Richland II? Did you know that a seven-year-old brought a loaded gun to an elementary school in Richland II in May of this year? Research shows that kids who undergo gun safety training behave the same way as those who don't, and that's why it's an adult's responsibility to secure guns so children cannot access them. These statistics emphasize why it's so important to follow the principles of Be Smart. Be Smart is an acronym which stands for S, Secure All Guns In Your Home And Vehicles, which includes locking the guns and storing ammunition separately. M stands for Model Responsible Behavior Around Guns. A means ask about the presence of unsecured guns in other homes where your children visit. R is recognize the role of guns in suicide. And T is tell others to be smart, tell your peers to be smart. One year ago, Richland II signed an agreement with seven other school districts, four hospital systems, and twelve law enforcement agencies to share the principles of Be Smart throughout our school communities. Since the signing last year, we have had regular task force meetings to plan ways to share this important message, created videos about the Be Smart message, created a social media campaign, tabled at various events, presented at other events. Sorry, I lost my place. And maybe most importantly, we've given away hundreds of free gun locks. We continue to make plans for the future within this partnership. We understand that gun violence is a very complex problem and will require many different efforts to solve, but we want to thank Richland II and Dr. Davis for your continued support of the Be Smart principles and the proactive approach to preventing gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vandelay. And our last speaker this evening will be David Oberly.
Good evening. I've got some bad news for y'all. I'm actually here, so. I want to welcome the new Board members here to, to the Board and everything. I've got some great hopes for this Board that it's going to be very civil and very professional. And I think you have a lot of different talents that you bring to the table that, that you can play off each other, so I'm really excited for going forward. And I'd also like to congratulate the performance tonight. And I'm a proud parent of two Conder stars. So, um, proud of that performance tonight. It was very, very good. Don't really have a lot of problems. You can often tell how good someone's got it by, by their problems, so I don't really have any big problems. But one thing I did hear at the last board meeting, I think it was, or maybe one before that, the whole child survey that my children participated in, I didn't know that, I had a chance to opt out. I wish I did, but the first question was, what's your gender? And it was male, female, non-binary, and maybe, like, I don't know, whatever, I don't know. I was kind of troubled by that because I'm, I'm hoping I'm not going to explain to my daughters at nine years old what non-binary means. Let's be more inclusive. Let's say, what's your gender and put a blank line. You know, whatever you want to be in the world. That's, that's more inclusive than, than what we had right here. And then it doesn't expose my children to, to things they don't need to be, you know, worried about. But, you know, one thing too is that parents are stakeholders over children, and I'm hoping that the policies that you guys revise or create or whatever will keep this in mind, that we are the stakeholders. Being my dad's son, I did the math a little bit a while ago, and in a given eighteen-year school, uh, year period, the school has my child for eleven percent of the time. Eighty-nine percent, I've got him. So I'm, I'm the main teacher for my children, okay? I want them to be taught the way I want them to be taught and correctly and all that kind of stuff. But just keep in mind to parents that we do matter and we have voices and, and we want to be heard. My children are, are my world to me and their education is my world to me. I've been very involved from the get-go. I've been PTO president, I've been SIC member, all kinds of great things. I got to go have lunch with them the other day, which was just wonderful. So, you know, parents like myself, I think, should be rewarded for wanting to be involved. And, and, you know, for the longest time, we heard parents, I mean, teachers saying, where's the parents at, they're not being involved. Well, now we are, you know, and so I just hope our voices are going to be heard and everything. So again, congratulations on the new Board members and look forward to some great things forward. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I am pushing on the button and it's not staying on. So, three times is a charm. Thank you, Mr. Oberly. Okay, now we will move on to- Okay, now we will move on to voting on executive session items. Item 7.1, may I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
For student number one, I make a motion that the student attends Blythewood Academy.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash for the student number one to go to Blythewood Academy. Board members, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I make a motion for student number two, that we grant the in-person appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been paid, made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. Student number three. Dr. Scott.
I make a motion for student number three, Blythewood Academy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Members, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. Student number four.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I make a motion that we deny the appeal for student number four.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has, or it's been seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? And the motion is correct. Members, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. The motion carries. Student number five.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I make a motion that we grant the in-person appeal for student number five.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Grant the hearing?
The in-person.
In-person. The motion is correct. Members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Student number six.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I make a motion that we deny the appeal for student number six.
The motion has been made to deny the appeal for student number six. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? And the motion is correct on the board. Members, please vote. The vote is seven to zero. The motion carries. Student number seven.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I make a motion that for student number seven, attend Blythewood Academy.
The motion's been made by Dr. Scott for the student to attend Blythewood Academy. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? And the motion is correct on the board. Members, please vote. And the motion passes. There are five yes, two no. Student number eight.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
For student number eight, deny the appeal.
The motion's been made by Dr. Scott to deny the appeal. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mrs. Washington has made a second. Is there any discussion? And the motion is correct on the board. Members, please vote. And the vote is seven to zero. The motion carries. Student number nine.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I make a motion for student number nine to deny the appeal.
Dr. Scott has made a motion for, to deny student number nine's appeal. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? And the motion is correct on the board. Board members, please vote. And the motion carries. The vote is seven to zero. Student number ten.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
For student number ten, I make a motion to deny the appeal.
Dr. Scott has made a motion to deny the appeal for student number ten. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mrs. McFadden has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? And the motion appears correct on the board. Members, please vote. And the vote is seven to zero. The motion carries. Student number eleven.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
For student number eleven, I make a motion that we deny the appeal.
Dr. Scott has made a motion that for student number eleven, we deny the appeal. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mrs. Nash has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? The motion is correct on the board. Board members, please vote. And the motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item 7.2, may I please have a motion regarding the breach of contracts?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we deny the administration's decision to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employee number one who breached their contract with the district.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Mrs. McFadden, can you confirm that your motion is correct on the board?
My motion is correct.
Okay, board members, please vote.
I want to deny.
The motion passes. There are five yeses and two noes. Teacher number two, employee number two.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we deny the administration's decision to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employee number two who breached their contract with the district.
Mrs. McFadden has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I want to make sure I'm thinking about this correctly. Were we talking about page four, employee two, or employee two?
We are talking about the breach of contracts, not, no, you're talking about professional releases.
Okay, okay.
So, no, we're talking about the breach of contracts. We had three features.
I got you.
Three employees, thank you. Mrs. McFadden, can you confirm that the motion is correct?
It is correct.
All right, board members, please...
Professional employee number two who breached their employment contract with the district.
Does something need to be corrected?
It says professional employee, yeah, number two, that's correct now.
Okay, thank you. The vote is six to one. The motion carries. Employing number three.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we deny the administration's decision to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employee number three who breached their contract with the district.
Mrs. McFadden has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Mrs. McFadden, can you please confirm the motion?
That is correct.
Okay, board members, please vote. And the motion carries. The vote is five to two. We'll be now moving on to item 7.3, may I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases with the exception of page four, employee number two.
There's been a motion made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion?
Ms. Porter, can you restate your motion?
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified staff releases with the exception of page four, employee number two. I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified staff releases with the exception of page four, employee number two.
Okay. Mrs. Porter, can you confirm that the motion is correct on the board?
It is.
That is correct. All right. Members, please vote.
I have a, I have a question.
We're voting. The call, the vote has been called.
Okay.
The vote is seven to zero. The motion carries. No, we, we, we've already voted on it. We can't talk about it since the, we've had the vote. We're going to move on to item 8.1, um, the South Carolina School Boards Association Resolutions. Um, we will handle these items one through 12, thirteen through 24, and 25 through 34. And I just wanted to say something briefly before we get a motion. So the public knows, first of all, these are, resolutions are all included in the board docket, so they're online, so you have access to these. Um, this weekend, the 73 school districts in South Carolina will convene in Charleston for the South Carolina School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. Delegates will, delegates will elect the associate, association's leadership and adopt positions on educational issues that reflect the philosophies of the South Carolina School Boards Association membership. Mrs. McFadden and Mrs. Porter will serve as the delegates for Richland II with Mr. Trapp serving as an alternate. Do I have a, a motion for items one through 12?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
Dr. Scott.
Yes, I make a motion to approve for discussion the proposed South Carolina School Board Association Resolutions one through 12.
So you'd like to approve items one through 12 on the, are there any up for discussion or that would like to be polled?
Well, you only gave us one through 12, so do you want me to approve all of them and then we go back for the discussion, which will be?
If, if you approve them, then we can't discuss them. We need to pull them out and discuss them.
I'm not sure what people want pulled. So we probably shouldn't categorize them with numbers one through 12 like you initially asked for because I'm pretty sure different board members have different ones that they'd like to have pulled.
Uh, why don't we discuss one through 12? Are there any that board members would like to be polled and discussed separately? And then we could make a block motion for those that members do not.
Yeah, motions and second and discussion. I can't list some of which ones they want pulled out. To do. Right, that's why I said. Okay.
All right, so we, we need to have a discussion. I, I, excuse me, we need to have a motion.
Yes, so I'm, so I'm going to make a motion for a discussion of the resolutions and then we come back and make a motion to approve. Is that how? So. Right, but we're doing one through 12, so should we just do them individually? Yes.
Yeah.
Well, some we may not even have any discussion on.
You can make a motion to pull out one and two and have a discussion. If you want to have a discussion on any, say that.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a discussion on resolutions number one, number two, and number two. For approval. And then have a discussion.
You, you have to make a motion for the approval of one and two.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for resolution number one.
What is your motion going to be?
To approve number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion, there's been a motion made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to approve resolution number one. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
For resolution number one, I would like to request that the delegates, when they go to vote on behalf of Richland School District II, that they will be willing to just change the word relinquish to either delegate or authorize. Resolution number one, just the wording.
So now we have a secondary motion. She's asking to change on. Somebody else needs to make that secondary motion.
I'd like to make a secondary motion, Madam Chair, to change relinquish to delegate. Change the wording to.
Second.
So a secondary motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. McFadden for, on resolution number one, to change the wording from relinquish to authorize. Is there any discussion?
Question, yes. So when we go down here, we get the number of votes for this, once we get, got it changed?
Excuse me?
So we get a total of nine votes?
You will.
Okay, so when it comes up, you're asking for, for us to change this?
No, she's, she's asking when she goes to the session, you'll get nine votes. And we could talk about that later. But yeah, all nine votes will go, whatever the board majority agrees upon will be how our delegates will vote.
Okay, so changing this word to authorize and then?
Is the word authorize or delegate?
Delegate.
Delegate.
Okay.
And we thank the public for their patience. We've got a brand-new group up here. So, um, is there any discussion? Is the secondary motion correct? All right, members, please. Is it a hand vote for a secondary motion? Okay.
Madam Chair, is it too late to have a discussion?
Oh, we've called for the vote.
Okay.
So the motion carries, seven to zero. Now back to our main motion, which was to approve resolution number one. Is there any discussion? Members, please vote. The motion passes, seven to zero.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I'd like, like to make a motion for resolution number two, that we deny the motion of number, resolution number two.
Is there a second for the denial of motion number two?
Second.
And it's been seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Could you, for discussion, please speak into the microphone, Mrs. McFadden. Thank you.
I hate to go back, but for this one that we just did, it says, "I make a motion to approve SESBA proposed resolution number one." It should say, if I'm not right, uh, wrong, with the, with the secondary, with the events of the secondary motion.
The secondary would have been included in it.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, the motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to, um, not adopt or not accept resolution number two. Is that correct? Up there, it says number one. Oh, okay. Called the vote? And the motion passes, six to one, to not adopt resolution number two. Do I have another motion?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolutions three through 34 of the South Carolina School Boards Association.
Dr. Scott has made a motion to adopt resolutions three through 34. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Um, is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to pull number 14 and 15. Mrs. McFadden. That we pull.
Mrs. McFadden has asked that we pull, make a motion to move 14 and 15.
A motion to pull resolutions number 14 and, um, health insurance coverage for board and 15 impact fees.
Do we have a second to pull motions, resolutions 14 and 15?
Second.
And we've got a second by Mrs. Washington. She's made a secondary motion to your motion. No, you don't. No.
Yes. Because she wants.
Okay. All right, Mrs. McFadden. Discussion on 14 and 15?
Uh huh.
Excuse me? No, she's asked for them to be polled, so then, for discussion. She's pulled them, not to approve them.
I want them to be, I want them to be taken out of the group that Monica has set from one through, uh, three through 30. I want those pulled out for, to make a different motion on those.
So, Mrs. McFadden, would you like for me to amend my motion?
That's fine, yes ma'am.
That's probably what we want to do, to amend my motion.
Or either way.
Okay, um, Madam Chair.
Are you going to withdraw your?
No, I'm going to amend.
You can amend your motion. You can withdraw it and we can start again.
Let me just withdraw my motion and then I'll make a new motion. Let me just go ahead and withdraw and make a new motion with the exception of 14 and 15. Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the resolutions except for 14 and 15.
So Dr. Scott would like to approve motions three through forty, three through 34 with the exception of 14 and 15?
I would, let me just make sure I'm clear, because if I'm not clear, I know the people sitting out there are not clear. So I would like to have all the motions approved with a pullout of.
With the exception of.
With the exception of resolutions number 14 and 15. I do apologize, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. So the new motion has been made to adopt resolutions three through 34 with the exceptions of number 14 and 15. Is there a second?
Second.
And the motion has been seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter. Yes, discussion.
Can I, um, ask Ms. McFadden if her reasoning behind pulling number 15, knowing that we have the, uh, potential to continue to grow in this community without the increase of, um, businesses? I just want to hear your, your thoughts.
My thought are, with this one is, is that we should not be levying impacts or, or fees anymore taxes or anything like that, or going after homeowners or businesses for any reason to collect extra money.
Mrs. McFadden, can you speak into the microphone? I'm sorry, I couldn't even hear you.
Okay. I don't think that we should be levying impact fees on homeowners or colle, or commercial development at all. I think that what we get in taxes and what we have is able to sustain that. Um, there is economic growth and home development here. It is coming. Um, in the near future, there's development everywhere. So I don't think that we need to actually go after that. I think that it can be solved otherwise.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Is the motion correct?
Yes.
All right. Board members, let's vote. And the motion passes, six yes, one no. Um, we need a motion now for resolution number 14.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we not adopt resolution number 14, health insurance coverage for board members.
I move that we not adopt Resolution Number Fourteen, Health Insurance Coverage for Board Members.
Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Nash. Mrs. Nash, is there any discussion? There's no discussion. And the motion is correct on the board. Board members, please vote. And the motion passes six to one. A motion for Resolution Number Fifteen.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden?
I make a motion that we do not adopt Resolution Number Fifteen, Impact Fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
And there's, the motion's been made by Mrs. McFadden to not adopt Resolution Number Fifteen and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. And the motion passes. There are four yes and three nos. Moving on. New business, no action required. We will now move on to Item Eight Point One, and Dr. Davis will share with us the Richland Two highlights.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our community that's present with us today and those that are watching, it's my honor to share with you all this week the district highlights. The district highlights, which are organized around the four core values of learning, character, community, and joy. And so, we'll begin with learning, as learning is the cornerstone of what we do here in Richland School District Two. And so, for the first time in two years, Richland Two will host an in-person Choice Fair featuring magnet programs to provide families information about all schools and centers in the district. The Choice Fair, a two-day event, is Tuesday, December the sixth, for elementary schools, and Wednesday, December the seventh, for middle schools and high schools, from five to six thirty P.M. each day. The online application process for choice begins December twelfth at eight A.M. and ends January the twenty-fifth at five P.M. Richland Two Choice includes magnets, expanded choice, and the R2E school. The character portion of my report highlights our seasons of gratitude. We began celebrating our seasons of gratitude in Richland Two on November the first and will continue through winter break. Led by the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, each week we focus on a different aspect of gratitude. And so far, we have gratefully noted during Week One, achievement that supports Richland Two's core values. During Week Two, military veterans. During Week Three, culture and environment that supports belonging for all members of the Richland Two family and for all Richland Two educators who teach and support our students. During the coming weeks, we will show gratitude by paying it forward, showing gratitude for retention strategies that will help us meet our goal of ninety-five percent employee retention, and showing gratitude to yourself. In other words, self-care. If you, if you get a chance, check out our Todd Parr's New York Times Bestseller, The Thankful Book. It is a recommended, a recommended read that teaches us to be thankful for everything from hugs, holidays, hair, gardens, friends, vacations, to school, music, libraries, health foods, seasons, and most of all, each of you. In the area of community, Richland Two is receiving a two-million-dollar grant to implement the Premier Pathways for Student Success Project in twenty-four schools. The Department of Defense Education Activity Grant will affect some thirty-seven hundred and thirty-three military-connected students at twelve elementary, seven middle, and five high schools. The grant will provide resources that promote student achievement in the core curricular areas, promote virtual learning to increase educational program cohesiveness, and provide multi-tier systems of support. This will improve education continuity for transitioning military-connected students. This project will also extend Avid, our advancement via individual determination, a college and career readiness program. For a complete list of schools benefiting from the grant, visit the district's website. Richland Two is continuously recruiting qualified applicants for positions across the district, and all positions recruitment fair will be held January the seventh from eight A.M. to twelve P.M. here at R2I2. Registration is recommended on the district's website. Walk-ins will also be welcome. And now for some joy. Today, I had the honor, along with several of our board members, and privilege of, and pleasure to participate in surprising, a surprising announcement of the 2023 South Carolina Elementary Principal of the Year. The South Carolina Association of School Administrators announced Bookman Road Elementary School Principal, Dr. Kendra Hill, as the 2023 Elementary Principal of the Year. Congratulations to Dr. Hill, her students and staff, and everyone at Bookman Road Elementary Community. Let's give her a round of applause. Dr. Hill is the first elementary principal in Richland Two to win this award since Denise Barth won it in 2017, while principal at Catawba Trail Elementary, and Forest Lake Elementary School Principal, Dr. Cappy Stack, in 2010. Demetrius Williams, a fifth-grade teacher at North Springs Elementary School, is the November 2022 Rookie Teacher of the Year. Principal Rashad Adams nominated Williams, saying she approaches each day with a growth mindset, has a positive outlook on every situation, and is eager to collaborate with peers when making student-centered decisions. Although, this is, this is Williams's first year teaching, she worked for five years as a computer lab instructor at North Springs before obtaining her teaching certification credentials. District Partner H&R Block sponsors this award. Each month, a new teacher is chosen, and then an overall winner is selected as the Rookie Teacher of the Year. Dr. Helen Nelson Grant, Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer, is the 2022 recipient of the Stephen G. Morris Nelson Mullins Social Justice Award. The award is named in the honor of Morrison, former partner of the Nelson Mullins Law Firm and past Chair of the Columbia Urban League Board of Directors. Morrison used his legal skills to advance social justice and equal opportunity for the disadvantaged and underserved before his passing in 2013. The Columbia Urban League presented Dr. Grant with the award earlier this month at his fifty-fifth Annual Equal Opportunity Day Dinner. Recently, Columbia Business Magazine named Dr. Grant the Best Diversity and Inclusion Officer of the Year for his 2021 South Carolina Best in Business Award. And last, but not least, the American Consortium for Equity in Education has selected two employees of Jackson Creek Elementary School as winners in its Excellence in Equity Awards Program. Principal Dr. Sabina Maso-Taylor is a winner in the Champion of Equity School Leadership category. Fifth-grade teacher Valente Gibson is a winner in the Champion of Equity General Education Teacher category. This dynamic duo has been, dynamic duo has been working together at Jackson Creek since the school opened in August of 2017. Let's give them all a round of applause. Madam Chair, that concludes the district highlights for the November twenty-ninth Richland Two Regular Board Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Moving on to Item Nine Point Two, New Business, No Action Required. Now, we will have the first quarter, excuse me, First Quarter Pupil Services Report. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First Quarter Pupil Services Report will be brought to us today by Mr. Cleveland Smith and Dr. Shaleah Burnett-Lau. You got it? Dr. Lau?
Community. Can you, oh, that's better. Good evening again, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Davis, and the community. I'm Dr. Shaleah Burnett-Lau, Director of Pupil Services, and I have a colleague that I'm excited to be with me tonight.
Good evening. I'm Kara Thompson, the Coordinator of Family Intervention Services.
And we are here to present the First Quarter Pupil Services Award, not award, I'm sorry, report. And so, we'll, I'll be sharing with you all some data, disciplinary and behavioral data for the first quarter of this school year. And we also will be sharing with you all some trends, some comparative data, four-year trends for behavior and discipline. And we'll also share with you all some supportive and proactive measures that we have within the district to address students' social and emotional wellness. So, the first slide we are sharing tonight are numbers for actual infractions. So, a few things I just want to highlight. The gray area is for, that is representing post-pandemic and when we were primarily shut down. And so, with that, we know that those are anomalies, and that's why there's the gray shading there. So, a few things that I just want to highlight from this slide for you all. There is a seventeen percent decrease in overall incidents from first quarter of last year. There's also a forty-two percent decrease in overall incidents since the 2019-2020 school year. There is a fourteen percent increase, however, in Level Two infractions. And just some information I'd like to share, the National Center for Education Statistics, that comes out of the statistical office in the U.S. Department of Education, they submitted a report in July 2022, so this past summer. And they shared some data regarding post-pandemic trends. And three of those that I want to share with you, eighty-seven percent of school leaders across the nation have reported a marked impact on students' social, emotional, and behavioral development, so very significant impacts. Eighty-four percent of schools in our nation either agree or strongly agree that students' behavioral development has been negatively impacted post-pandemic. And they shared some of the behavioral incidents that are the most concerning for schools and school districts around the nation, and they primarily align to the Level Two infractions. So, one of those would be like class and school disruptions, right? So, that is a national trend, and so what you're seeing here with the increases in Level Two infractions certainly aligns to that. Now, after sharing with you all the actual numbers of infractions, I'm sharing with you all some data regarding our school, our district's responses to those behaviors. So, of course, we have in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and expulsions. And you all will see that from last year, first quarter, to this year, we're pretty comparable in terms of our numbers for in-school suspensions and expulsions. You do see an increase. There's a fourteen percent increase approximately in out-of-school suspensions. There's also a fourteen percent increase in Level Two infractions that I just shared with you. So, the majority of the Level Two infractions that you all, that I just discussed, are not resulting in expulsions. They're resulting in either out-of-school suspensions or some type of restorative practices or in-school suspensions. We are excited to let you all know that there has been a seventeen percent decrease in fighting infractions from last year, first quarter, to this year. And now, I want to also talk about some of the supportive and proactive strategies that we have to address students' social, emotional wellness. So, these strategies here, we've discussed before. The one thing I did want to highlight that's here on the screen are restorative practices, because that was discussed before. And I did want to share with you all that over ninety percent of our school administrators are trained on restorative practices. The dates for restorative practices, because we have several sessions that are scheduled for this year. We had one already, November sixteenth. There are four more sessions, December first, January thirty-first, March second, and March sixteenth. So, those are additional training opportunities for both administrators and school counseling directors specifically for restorative practices. So, this is just a quick spotlight on proactive and supportive measures that we have. But I will turn it over at this time to something really special in our district, Family Intervention Services. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Kara Thompson.
Thank you. Family Intervention Services is a very unique program that has been in Richland School District Two since the early 2000s. We offer family-focused support services for students and their caregivers to help them work towards school success according to their goals. That could be attendance, decreasing disciplinary infractions. That could be social, emotional wellness, whatever the family identifies is important to them and the goals they want to work toward. We have six licensed mental health professionals in our program. We also partner with universities in the area to extend our ability to provide these services to the students and caregivers in our district. We also have a State Department grant that funds a project coordinator that coordinates counseling services for students at Blythewood Academy. So, that top line of gray boxes there just shows our referrals for the first quarter of this school year. So, you can see we have Blythewood Academy. A probation referral is someone that is recommended, a student that's recommended for expulsion passes through Dr. Burnett-Lau's office and is allowed to go back to their sending school. And so, they're referred to Family Intervention Services according to that family's individual needs. An intervention referral is from an administrator at a school that notices a pattern of escalating behavioral concerns, and it's an effort to help prevent further escalation to the point of a recommendation for expulsion. Voluntary or learning support services referrals are from our school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, who identify some need of the student or the family for things like anxiety, depression, maybe suicidal risk, or grief and loss that's affecting their academic or their school success somehow. And then the other category, honestly, most of those are continued from the previous year that don't fall into the, one of those categories this year, but they did the previous year. So, you can see at the bottom, we have had four hundred and seventy-nine total referrals. That's just in quarter one of this school year. Two hundred and seven of those students have actually received some sort of clinical therapeutic service, and nearly seven hundred clinical services were provided in quarter one.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
Yes. First of all, thank you guys very much for that presentation. It's good to see the decrease in some of our categories. But I wanted you to briefly just inform the new board members as well as the public, just an example of Levels One, Two, and Three, so they can have an idea of what you're talking about when you say that, just briefly.
Yes, absolutely, Dr. Scott. So, Level One infractions would be primarily things that are handled either in a classroom setting or within a school setting. So, an example of a Level One offense would be something like not raising your hand before you talk, or maybe skipping a class. Those types of offenses typically do not result in any type of removal from the school or the classroom setting. Typically, those types of offenses, which align to our matrix, would result in like a verbal reprimand or something like that. Level Two are a bit more egregious. We would have, say, for instance, things like fighting or classroom disruptions, disrespect. That's at the Level Two level. And schools have an opportunity to provide in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and sometimes, even though it's a Level Two offense, it could still rise to the level of a recommendation for expulsion. And Level Threes are our highest offenses, and those are typically ones, not typically, they always result in a recommendation for expulsion. An example of those would be like drugs in school, things like that. So, those are Level Three infractions. Is that enough information?
That's great. Thank you so much. Madam Chair, I know, you'll come back to me.
No, you're not finished. You still have the floor.
Okay.
Please direct your questions to the board chair.
Absolutely, absolutely. Want to do things in order. So, my next question would be, when we're looking at your slide, we had one hundred and fifty-one infractions for 2022, 2023. And I'm just wondering, thank you so much for pulling that up. When we're talking about... When we're talking about the number of fights and infractions, that 151, what does that represent? Oh, high school, middle school, elementary, or a combination?
That would be K-12. I'm sorry, Dr. Scott, I cut you off.
Well, I was asking that because I know when we get things brought before us, there's an extreme high number with high school.
Right.
And I would love, later on in a board brief, that you can show us, break down those categories with elementary school, middle, and high school. So we can really be able to compare some things, and even by school.
Okay, alright. So absolutely, and the answer to your question is that those numbers do represent K-12.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes, so I have a question. She, there was a number of 14% increase. I wanted to know, what are you all noticing in terms of trends? Is it the time of year? Is it, you know, during testing? So what are the trends for that 14% increase?
Just in looking at the actual numbers, it's very hard to say a particular offense or a particular trend. So I am actually going to see if I can defer to Dr. Davis any comments you would like to add on that.
I think at this time, we haven't really looked at the data from that perspective, to be quite honest, whether or not the trends are related to a specific time. We do know that nationally, the trend, particularly as we talk about Level 3 infractions and fighting, we see that as a national trend around, and a statewide trend of increase in fighting. And a lot of that can be attributed to students still beginning to re-acclimate themselves to the social setting of schools from the long stint of times we've spent in COVID. I would give an anecdotal answer to that question without a complete examination. I'm going to also suggest, from my experience in conversations with our administrators, that many of our students, we need to spend some time focusing on some conflict resolution skills. As a result of students not appropriately learning how to solve or resolve conflict, particularly with the onset and the overly utilization of social media, finding and seeing how conflict is resolved, I think, in inappropriate ways, oftentimes make it through their timeline and is highlighted on their timeline of events and actions that students are taking. So we are taking some pro-measure, some measure steps and some proactive steps to begin to address those issues.
Madam Chair. I wanted to ask about the services that we provide for Family Intervention. If, I noticed that we have six licensed professionals. For students who may qualify for these services outside of school, where it's paid for by the state, are they allowed to choose that licensed professional to be someone who's hired within our school district? Do we offer those services for, in the event that parents don't find it and they're scheduled to take their child who needs these services to receive them?
Thank you, Mrs. Porter, Dr. Davis.
I'll let our Family Intervention Services officials answer that question.
Sure. Is, correct me if I misunderstand your question, but I think you're asking like, can families choose if they would prefer an outside provider for their counseling services?
No, can they choose to receive services in school? Say that the parent can't find a way to take their child?
Yes. We offer a lot of evening and afternoon appointments, and when those appointments are filled, we've actually begun doing, our interns do travel into the school buildings according to our availability. But many of the middle and high school students have one of our interns. They go into the schools. We've actually, because of telehealth, we have been able to do some unique problem solving, and we've been able to pull the student out of the classroom, telehealth the parent in, so we still get that parental involvement. They know what's going on, they're informed, they're part of the process. And then the student goes back to school, and then they minimize that missed instruction time, so they're not having to miss work, pull their student from class, miss half a day, you know, by taking them to a location elsewhere. So we are doing our best to problem solve in a lot of different ways for that very reason.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 9.3, new business, no action required. We will now move on to the first quarter finance report. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have Ms. Shelly Allen, who will come before us today and provide us with the first quarter financial report. Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're presenting to you tonight the first quarter financial report for the 2022-23 school year. And maybe I can get this thing to work, let's see. Or maybe not. The longer it gets in the evening, you know, the more you don't want to have anything take longer. Alright, thank you. Okay, it worked for him, but it is not working for me. There, oh, there we go. Alright, here we go. First of all, I want, I know we have several new board members, and then several of you have gone through this process and heard some of the same things. But I'm going to repeat some of the things that you've probably heard before so that we can make sure that the new board members also have some of the background information that we discuss at different quarters during our financial reports. As many of you recall from our past meetings, in the first quarter, there is very little activity. It is related to the months that we have, summer months. Revenues tend to be coming in slowly, and our expenditures kind of level off during that timeframe. So there's not as much data during that particular quarter, and it definitely skews the numbers at all. And I'm going to show you a couple of things that kind of paint a picture of that for you. A couple of things I want to just highlight. I know you've all probably looked over the actual numbers of the report, but just looking at the five-year averages for the general fund, the revenues are fairly in line with our five-year average. They're slightly higher by about a percentage, percentage and a half. We see the same trend with the five-year average for expenditures. We're trending about 1.4% higher than the average for the past five years. So that's very common, just depending on how calendars fall out. It fluctuates. So I feel very good about overall where our revenues and expenditures are falling out. There are a couple of categories, I know in revenues, just looking back at past years, that kind of stood out a little bit. Indirect cost, and both of these areas are typically revenues that are a lesser revenue, I guess you would say. They're not like huge tax dollars and not our state revenues, but their increase is pretty significant. Our indirect cost, which we budgeted to increase more this year, has gone up significantly as a result of our ESAR funds. So those large dollar amounts and expenditures going out for that, we're able to charge that indirect cost. For those of you who aren't familiar with indirect costs, that's basically, for lack of a better way of putting it, a operational cost that we apply that, where they pay back the district for some of those administrative-related costs. And we have a certain percentage that's set at the state level that we can charge our federal programs. So that indirect cost has increased and is coming in very well compared to budget, if not above budget. So we feel good about that. Interest is the other area that, quite frankly, the last few years has dwindled to virtually nothing, and it's a very small amount. But what we're seeing is major trend increases with interest rates. So we are doing very well in the interest category and have already surpassed our budget related to interest. We went back and did some analysis for the past six years just looking at interest rates that we were getting on the local government investment pool, which is where the majority of our money is held. And the rates got as low as 0.09-something percent back in June and July of '21. And October '22, we're up to like 3.2 to 8%. So that has definitely resulted in a positive trend for us related to interest. So those were just a couple of things that I wanted to mention specifically. The other thing I wanted to just kind of remind us of, since this first quarter, the data is just skewed a little bit. It's not quite as meaningful. I wanted to remind everyone of the big picture of where our revenues come from. When you're looking at our overall general fund budget, our primary revenues are coming from the three categories of local, state, and federal dollars. We have a very small amount that comes from federal, and that's primarily impact aid and indirect cost. Our local revenues are predominantly our local tax dollars, and then state revenue makes up the majority of what now sustains our general fund. And those show the percentages, just so you have a perspective of that. With regards to our general fund expenditure budget, that breaks down into different categories. Salaries and benefits, supplies, materials, utilities, other objects, property contracts, repairs and maintenance, and purchase services. As you can see, roughly 95% of our overall expenditure budget is tied up in personnel costs, operational contracts, and utilities. So that's a very significant part of our budget, with 86.5% being salaries and benefits. So just kind of wanted to paint that picture and perspective. So as we're going into this year, those of you who are seeing this again in a whole new year, and then some of you that may be experiencing some of this for the first time, want to just kind of give that perspective, so everybody has a good starting point. And we'll be going into the budget process in a couple of months, and so that'll be a good little refresher. In addition, I wanted to share kind of a picture of what our total revenue spread looks like per quarter. And this was hopefully to paint a picture for you of why this quarter is a lot different than some of the other quarters. If the quarter was perfectly a quarter, it would be equally divided, 25% of our total revenue coming in each quarter. That's clearly not what happens. In our first quarter, we typically receive, and this is based on a three-year average, about 12.1% of our revenue. We receive the largest chunk of our total revenue in the third quarter at 37%. So this is just kind of to paint a picture for you of how the revenues come in in different quantities in each quarter. This shows a breakdown of actual federal, local, and state revenue and the percentage of when, which quarter those dollars are coming in predominantly. So what stands out here is that local revenue, the majority of our local tax dollars come in in that third quarter. So we have trickles of tax dollars coming in every month, predominantly from vehicle taxes. But the majority of those monies, we don't receive until January and February. Roughly 70 to 80% of our local tax dollars, we receive in January, and generally around 20% in February. So we're paying bills during these first six months, and there's a significant amount of our revenue that doesn't come in until further in the year, in that third quarter. This is one of the things, as we go through the budget process and we talk about having a fund balance that can help sustain us, this is where it becomes very important, because we're spending trends and spending money every month at a higher rate in that first quarter than we are the rest of the year compared to the revenues coming in. Just some additional information we wanted to provide. You should have at your seat, we just completed this additional information, a summary of your EIA and our special revenue reports. Basically, what we've done, I know there's been a lot of interest in having some additional information about what these are. Our team, who I appreciate so very much, worked in this past week to try and gather some information that at least would give you some additional descriptions of what some of these funds are, because there are a lot of funds, and it is very difficult to keep up with everything. So we've provided additional report for EIA and special revenue that has a brief description of the funds and at least gives you some kind of indicator. I will tell you, this is a work in progress. This is something that I envision us expanding as we go forward, and as we realize there's other useful information we could potentially put on here, you know, we will be looking at that. But the things we felt like were really important that we could accumulate pretty quickly to get to y'all is the brief descriptions. So all of those funds have that on there. In addition to that, we indicated whether the funding source was federal or state. There are some funds that are local funds or granted funds, but the majority of those are in the rolled-up 800 category. With the EIA funds and most of the special revenue funds, they are going to be coming from a state or a federal source. So that's indicated on there for your reference. And the other thing that is, I think, very helpful to know is whether these grants and funds are based on a formula grant or a competitive grant. And I tried to give a little explanation about what the difference between a formula grant and a competitive grant is. Basically, a formula grant, for lack of a really detailed explanation, it is basically an amount that's allocated at the state level, given to typically the State Department of Education. And they allocate it out to schools based on some data point. So it could be based on students served. It could be based on the number of at-risk students. It could be based on the number of teachers, et cetera. But they basically have a set formula. You all should have also the funding manual copy for your reference. It's a very, very big book, and it's not going to be something you probably want to sit at home and read unless you're ready to like go to sleep. But if you are curious about any of the particular funds, there's additional information about how those funds can be spent. And for the formula grants, at the beginning of each explanation on the funds, it talks about the formula that's used at the state level and what components they use to calculate that and distribute our revenue. So that's basically what formula grants are. Most of them go to all school districts or all school districts serving whatever those parameters are. Competitive grants are grants that the district or a school or teacher actually go and apply for. So we're actually competing with other districts, other schools, for these particular grants. Some of them are very small, a couple thousand dollar grants that a teacher may write. And then some of them are very large grants, like Year Up Grant, that serves multiple schools in the district. So that is another piece of it that I think is really important. There's usually a whole lot of additional legwork that has to be done on the front end for these competitive grants. We are very fortunate and have a employee dedicated to grants initiatives in our district who helps spearhead a lot of that. So that's hugely a blessing for this district. Every district does not have that position. So there is extensive work that has to be done with that, and there are usually some very structured guidelines with that. All of the state and federal funds, and this is some additional information that's in those funding manuals, have pretty structured things that you can spend it on. They tell you down to the categories you can spend it on and the what you can spend it on, et cetera. In addition to that, a lot of these competitive grants not only have a general thought process of how you're supposed to spend those funds, but also you write into the grants, the competitive grants, what you intend to do with those funds. So you have to spend them the way you write them and/or amend the grant. So that's just some background information that I thought would be very helpful for our new board members and just to expand on some of the things that we have seen in our past reports. And that's all I wanted to actually highlight. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I do have a few questions. One, I wanted to take a look at the EEDA at Risk. And first, let me say thank you for this sheet, because it really helps. And as I was looking over the information for the description, it talked about that the EEDA at Risk serves Blythewood Academy. And I'm just curious, in some of the ways that it actually serves Blythewood Academy, because I know they are served through the Family Intervention, but that is not a part of this. And then I know the teachers are there. So can you just, you know, not a whole list, but just an idea of how this, these funds are used for Blythewood Academy? And I'm talking about page three for new board members. Page three, that second item, EEDA at Risk. And Dr. Davis, do you have someone that can speak on that for us? And Dr. Davis, do you have someone that can speak on that for us?
Which we tried to provide in the brief description, what is being used at Blackwood Academy for. So as identified in this brief description, that is to implement the building bridges to success and effective model for dropout prevention using evidence-based strategies designed to address the academic, emotional, career development needs of students with proven academic deficiencies, and it serves those students at Blackwood Academy.
Right, but I'm still not clear on that. And I guess my question is, when I think about the staff that we actually have at Blackwood Academy, and then I think about, I mean, what programs? Because when we're talking about the research and the dropout prevention, what exactly are we doing with dropout prevention as it relates to Blackwood Academy?
Yeah, Dr. Scott, we're not prepared to answer that question, as this is just a financial report. That's more of a programmatical update, and I'd be happy to provide you, provide the board with an update or a report on some of the programs we have in the school districts, particularly if you, the board would like to hear about this building bridges program at Blackwood Academy.
Well, no, I mean, I don't want to hear that, but if we're talking about finances, and if we're talking about we're spending the finances on this, I was hoping that someone, Mr. Smith or someone could tell us, yes. You know, Shelley said we're spending $150,000. Dr. Scott, let me tell you how we use part of this $150,000. So I thought, if I'm not ready for that, I can come back to that.
Yeah, that would not be at our level. We don't specifically know exactly each individual thing that a principal may be doing, or a department head may be doing, at a, in a department with $150,000, for example, that's allocated to them. However, if that's a more detailed, that's not a part of the financial update. We're trying to give you the bigger overview, but we can do a granular, detailed report on specifically how that money is being spent, and what those programs look like in our schools, if that's what, if that's the, if that's what the board would like for us to do, and more than happy to provide a more up-to-date report specifically about at-risk funds, and how they're being utilized in our schools.
Okay, that's fine. The other question I would ask is, when I'm looking at teacher supplies, I'm just curious, we're talking about $570,000. Is that part of, at the beginning of the year, teachers get this check of $200 or $250, is this money part of that?
That is what it is, exactly what it is.
So with that, let's say, for an example, we have 1,000 teachers. So we're talking about 1,000 teachers times $250.
And I think, I'm thinking the amount went up to 300 this past year.
Ooh, look at you guys. And guess what? That's still nothing compared to the amount of money that teachers spend. That's just a small little portion of that. So $300, so 1,000 teachers times $300, and then that would be part of this money?
That is, that is what that money is for.
Okay, so with that, the leftover money, how could that? Because, I mean, we don't have a number, so I'm just guessing, and that's why I want you to kind of walk me through it, if you can.
Well, currently, you'll notice the balance is a negative $42,000, which if you look back at previous first-quarter reports, that is very common. There's a reconciliation that gets done with the State Department of Education, and when they do that, we true up the numbers at that point, and they send us the additional revenue at that point, based on whatever's reported in our SE educator system.
Okay, and thank you for saying that, because I was going to ask about the money. I use leftover money, but there is no leftover money. And I think my question was going to be, we'll start talking about the budget in just a few months. So thank you for that update of stating that we now have $300, because in the new budget, what I'm going to request is that we match that at the beginning of the year, because, you know, teachers spend a lot of money. They don't make a whole lot, but they spend a lot of money on teacher supplies and helping with students. And getting $300 at the beginning of the school year, that's good for probably one or two months. So I'm going to be asking during the budget, and teachers, this is for you, and I need your support on this, come to the budget meetings and ask that we double that money in January, that not only do you receive that $300 at the beginning of the year, but in January, that you receive another supply, because we can find the money, and I know it's out there, and you guys spend so much money. So I'll come back to that. And Madam Chair, do I finish, or someone else?
It would be appropriate to have somebody else take the floor.
Okay, absolutely. And then I'll just have it roll.
Other board members? Questions? Mrs. McFadden?
Ms. Allen, and Dr. Miley, thank y'all so much for this presentation, for this booklet, and for the descriptions. I really appreciate it. I know that a lot of time and effort went into this.
Excuse me, Mrs. McFadden, could you pull the microphone closer? I'm struggling to hear you as well.
I was just saying thank you to Dr. Miley and Ms. Shelley for putting this together so that we can see the dot line items and the descriptions. I really appreciate it, and we can see how those numbers are broke down. I really appreciate it. Thank y'all so much for all the time and every day y'all put into this.
I'll pass that along to my team who helped pull this together.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Any other board members?
I'd just like to say that this will be beneficial also when we go to the conference this weekend, and we vote on some of those resolutions that may give us more funds to put in specific areas. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Dr. Scott, do you have additional question? Oh, Mrs. Washington would like to speak.
So I had a question about the ESAR funds, and I know you probably don't have specific details, but can you just help me understand, this is $34 million that's budgeted, how much of that have we received, and what is the expiration date for those funds?
Are you, which, which particular one? Because there's several pots of those money.
There's several of them, yes. 218.
Okay. 218, we have until, I wish I could tell you, I have all these 120-something funds memorized and off the top of my head, but not quite there. That particular pot, we have until September of 2024. And so some of these pots of money look extra large, but they're, because they're going to be spread over multiple years. And that's the total budget for all of the remaining years.
Thank you.
Dr. Scott?
Yes, thank you. My final question is, for those who are sitting up here, I'm on page three, and the MISCEIA, which is number 399. Just curious, with the brief description, it talks about funding, and this category relates to funding provided for school or the library IT network. Help me understand that. Is that for library books, or?
You're talking about EIA, the EIA sheet? Page three?
Yes, yes. It's the $69,556, and we've spent, I guess, 68,000.
Yeah, there are actually two amounts that I think go into that, and basically what they use 399 for is if they allocate any unusual, different state money, and don't have a specific category assigned to it, they will use that 399. That's why it's called MISCEIA. So this reflects the two amounts that are out there right now, that are making up that 399. Part of it relates to E-Rate, and basically is being used to help support the network and infrastructure piece. I'm not even going to begin to try and explain to you what that is, because Tommy will be over there laughing at what I say, probably, but I refer to that as the behind-the-scenes stuff for the network piece. But I think it can be used not just for library, but school or library.
So can it also be used as part of the library, like books and those type things?
I'm pretty sure. I'd have to go look at the actual award doc, you know, where they gave us the funds, and look at the specific detail for those particular dollars, but I'm pretty sure that it's exclusive to something technology-related.
Okay, that's what I need.
These two particular pieces.
Okay, thank you so much. And again, thank you, guys, for this information. Really appreciate the hard work that went into this. Thank you.
Mrs. Washington.
Madam Chair, I have one more. And this may be a question for Dr. Davis. Do we have, or would you be able to provide the, I'm sorry, provide some type of document on the use of the ESAR funds, how we're going to use it as a school district before it expires in September 24?
Yes, we can provide you with the plan. We have to submit a plan to the State Department of Education on how we're going to spend the ESAR funds. That plan has to be approved by the State Department of Education. I can tell you, just in general, a large bulk of the money that we spend in our school district is on SOARS and our extended-day programs. So the SOARS program is for our students in the summertime, where we extend the school year for them, that requires, of course, our teachers, buses, food, we have aides that support that, all the things we basically go with running the school in the summer. That's what we do for our summers program. And then the extended-day program is also an extra day of extended academic support and learning for our students throughout the course of the school year. I think we just started our extended-day program here in November, and that's going to go up until the, around the end of school. And so we thought it was, we thought, particularly with this last pot of money, we wanted, this will be the, we've just completed our second year of SOARS. And what we've found thus far is that we're seeing our students who are participating in SOARS, as we're measuring and comparing them on their MAP scores, about 51, 52% of those students are showing growth as a result of participating in SOARS. We're doing some more data dive into that. I want to see what it looks like for students who've attended first and second sessions of SOARS, but it's beneficial, and I think it was, we can contribute, richly, to growth and success, a performance on our standardized testing at the end of the year, to those extended learning programs and the summer programs, and of course, to our teachers for being willing to provide that for our students and our parents for sending. We had great participation in the SOARS over the last two years.
Any more questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. May I ask about the middle school and high school students? I know SOARS for elementary. Do we have something in place for those students?
Yes, ma'am. Middle and high school students are participating in SOARS as well. We see the bulk, of course, of our students' participation come from the elementary level. We would like to see more of our high school students in the summer, but if you have a high school student, and how difficult that may be at times to get them to come to summer, to summer program, however, we do offer that program for our students.
Any more questions or discussion? Thank you, Ms. Allen. Moving on to item 10.0. Dr. Davis, please review the items for the draft agenda for the December 13, 2022 regular scheduled board meeting.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our public, as you can see before you, we have the draft agenda items for the December 13 regular scheduled board meeting. That board meeting is scheduled to start at 5:30, where we will call the meeting to order, and then adjourn, and take a motion, a vote to go into executive session. Currently, in our executive session items, we have student appeals, employment recommendations, receipt of legal advice regarding the IG report. In addition, we will need to add an item to executive session, which will cover the two in-person appeals that have been granted at this board meeting. We have our inspirational moment. We have the approval of the agenda at 4.1. At 5.1 through 5.4 will be the approval of our consent agenda, which includes our, which includes approval of the minutes, student admissions requests into the district's adult education program, employment releases, and in-district transfers. At 6.1, we have our public participation. 7.1, under voting on executive session items, we'll have the student appeals, our employment recommendations as, and our employment recommendations. I believe the two new students will be, can be added to that. We'll have under 8.1, new business, no action requests will be the richly into highlights, an update from the 2021-2022 assessment results, which will be, the focus will be on elementary and middle schools. This is our opportunity and dedication to adding academic content to our board meetings. If those of you who've read the reports, you know what that means. And then we'll follow that up with our draft agenda items for the January the 10th board meeting, and that should say 2023. It says 2022, but it will be 2023, in January, on January 10th. We'll have our public participation, our board and superintendent comments, our second public participation, I'm sorry, our board and superintendent comments, and then executive session items continue if needed, and then we'll ask for voting on those items if we do have them. If not, we'll move to adjournment. And that concludes the draft agenda for the, for the December 13th board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Board members, there's going to be a practice change to be in compliance with policy BEDB. Please submit your written request a minimum of three business days prior to this, prior to the board meeting, to the superintendent and board chair for review. Any suggestions or recommendations that you would like to see on the agenda? At this time, we will take suggestions or recommendations, but we're going to ask you also to submit them in writing to us. Board members, are there any items that you would like to be on future agendas?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I would like to add, on September the 29th, 2021, we had a group of parents that came and asked us to do the parent resolution. I would like to make a motion that we add the parent resolution to the December 13, 2022 meeting.
Okay, so we're not taking motions. You have to send it in a rec, in an email to us, per policy, okay? We're just taking recommendations or suggestions, so the public can hear what board members are interested in hearing.
Okay, well, I could make a recommendation for the parent resolution to be added to the December 13th meeting, and I'll send it in an email.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Any other board members have any items that they'd like included on future agendas?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
Yes, I would like to see the safety committee add it back to the agenda. We are going through so many things with schools, with weapons, with fights, and a whole lot of other things, and I think it would be great for us to have that discussion of bringing metal detectors into all of our schools, as well as R2I2, because it is a school as well. So I would love to see us have a discussion on the safety committee in return. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs., oh, Mrs. Porter?
I'd like to have a discussion about having, establishing standing committees amongst the board, so that we can become better experts in specific areas and spread it across all of us, to bring to the board for discussions.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
I have another.
Okay.
I'd also like to consider, or at least discuss, how we can make it a requirement for students that bring weapons to school to be screened or participate in services through family intervention, and at least see if we can get some data about the likelihood of them repeating that offense through those licensed professionals.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Washington?
Did you? Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to add to a future agenda to gather some more information and data on the following departments: human resources, and diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Thank you. Mrs. Nash, you look like you would like to...
Okay, it's my turn. Okay, I would like to add to the agenda a discussion about a teacher forum with new board members, and all the new board.
Teacher forum with board members.
And then also, sorry, one more, I had one more, sorry. And then also a discussion about school board members going back into the school and doing tours, and how those tours are done.
Oh, that would be a policy. Okay, school visitation. Any other?
Yes, and I would like for some, at some point, the strategic plan that we're doing, the five-year strategic plan, and the SIC's school improvement plans that we're working on.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. We have no one signed up for public participation, item 11.0. So now we will move on to item 12.0, board and superintendent comments. Mrs. McFadden, we will start with you.
It's good to be back and with the new board. Welcome, everyone, for our first meeting. I think it went really well. I want to say thank you for everyone who showed up. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mr. Trapp?
I would just like to thank everyone that came out this evening, here in the room with us. We appreciate you being here, and just like to invite the public to please come out and share their thoughts and ideas with us anytime we're here to serve you. We're here to serve you, and we want to know how you feel about things. Thanks, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Dr. Scott?
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. First, I want to say thank you for a job well done running your first meeting. Kudos to you for that. You've done a great job, and welcome to all of the new school board members. I'm very excited to have you guys be a part of us, especially the youth and the energy and the excitement and just innovative ideas that you guys have. So I've already grown and learned from many of you, so I look forward to continue that work cycle. I want to say thank you and congratulations to the Condor Stars who performed for us earlier. Thank you so much for sharing your talent with us. Dr. Kendra Hill, I'm so excited. She, as Dr. Davis stated earlier, was announced as the 2023 Elementary SCASA Principal of the Year. And I remember Dr. Hill as a young assistant principal in 2005 coming in, and just to see her growth and her leadership ability, it was just so awesome to be a part of that today. And also, congratulations to a few others that have received awards, and that's Dr. Sabino, Masso Taylor, and Dr. Helen Grant, not the Grant. I am really excited about the award that you won, and I'm excited about that because it's the Steve Morrison Award. And many don't know, but my aunt has been his nanny and was his nanny for 40 years. And he took me up under his wing, and he was a mentor to me. As a matter of fact, he took me to my very first Columbia Urban League dinner when I was, I think, middle or high school. So just to hear that name just gave me chills, and for you to win that award, congratulations to you. And once again, I really felt so good about this meeting today, executive session, the labs, and just the warmth and the compassion and the understanding and the understanding of to agree to disagree was just so awesome. So I'm just looking forward to a wonderful next two years while I'm on this board and beyond if I decide to run again. But just thank you, board members. Dr. Davis, thank you for your leadership tonight and the information that you shared with us, and everyone, just have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. Nash?
Well, first, I just want to say to the Condor Stars, you guys are absolutely amazing. Keep doing what you're doing. You guys shine bright. To everyone watching at home and everyone in this room, thank you guys for coming out. Having the community involved and continuously be involved is very, very important, and I hope that you guys continue to be a part of this process. And also, thank you for your patience, because I know that it can be a long night, and we're new and we're learning. So thank you to everyone, all the staff who puts all this together. You guys do a wonderful job. Sometimes when you're looking on the screen or if you're sitting here, you may not know all the things that go on with everybody, but thank you guys so much for all the reports that you guys did. Thank you for the tech team. You guys are phenomenal, but thank you guys so much for everything. And to everybody on the board, thank you guys so much for being patient with us. You guys are veterans, and we just appreciate all the help. Thank you, and you guys have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mrs. Porter?
Again, I want to repeat those sentiments with Condor Stars. Thank you so much for your performance, and I know that all of the teachers that were mentioned in our, from our first two students are extremely proud. I feel like they named every single staff person at their school of how wonderful they were, so that was great to hear. Thank you all in this room and at home for your warm welcome. Everywhere I go, I receive such a warm welcome and how excited people are to have us here, and I just appreciate that. I want you to know that we feel it. Also, for Dr. Grant, your award, I thought about the Columbia Urban League and as a young teen, them giving opportunities for me to volunteer and exposure to new experiences as a military child. So I don't know if you get to speak on that or get to offer ideas, but I'd love to hear more about that. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you all so much for coming out. This has been a night of just calm and peace, and I really, really appreciate the warm welcome. Appreciate everybody for viewing online as well as being here in person. Thank you to Dr. Davis and your entire staff for all that you do to make these presentations and reports easy for us to understand what's happening behind the scenes. We really appreciate all your hard work. I also want to thank, say thank you to our students for coming out and sharing their wonderful talents. We have a great group of students here in Richland Two, and I'm so excited to see all of the wonderful things that are happening. And our parents, we really appreciate you. We want to thank you and continue to welcome you to our board meetings. You have a voice. We're listening, and we appreciate everything that you say and that you do for our school district. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Dr. Davis?
Again, echo and sentiments of the Condor Stars. Thank you all and to the parents for entrusting your most precious resources to us here in Richland School District Two. The students did a phenomenal job, and the adults in the school do a phenomenal job. I love anyone in them each and every day, giving them all the confidence they need to stand before us and render such a wonderful performance. Shout-out goes out to Dr. Kendra Hill, as Dr. Scott stated earlier, super proud of Dr. Hill and being recognized as the Elementary Principal of the Year by SCASA, and just one more and a long list of administrators and teachers who've been recognized both statewide and nationally. Congratulations to Ms. Agostini on completing her first board meeting as chair, and to our new board members on completing your very first board meeting as duly-elected board members in Richland School District Two. And as always, thank you to my wonderful staff for all that you do to make this day and these nights possible. These are long days that start long before the day begins. We start preparing for board meetings several days ahead of a board meeting. And so I thank you all for the work that you do and to our community that continues to support our schools. We ask that you continue to do so. And one last thing, Ms. Agostini, I do want to shout out our Parent Advisory Council, I think which goes unmentioned. They have a very strong and powerful voice in our school district, and I really want to shout them out and thank them for our meeting this past week, where they are, we share information with them and get real dialogue and feedback in a very constructive way on how we can continuously improve our school district. So shout out to our Parent Advisory Council members who make, who represent every school in our district. So thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And I don't want to go through and repeat all the thank yous. I agree with my colleagues in the congratulations. The one group that I want to recognize, the people that come up and speak at public participation. I always so enjoy hearing from our community and our public. And I'm going to leave with, I am so grateful and thankful for our new board members. Welcome, Mrs. Washington, Ms. Porter, Ms. Nash, and Mr. Trapp. We are so glad to have you on board. With that said, I will move on to item 13.1, which we have no need for another executive session, so could I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and vote aye. Aye? All those opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Have a great night. Thank you.